Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. My name is Pam Hunt. I'm the designated hearing officer for these proceedings. The role of the hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not participate in any decisions regarding these proposed permit actions. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's hearing for the proposed issuance of air permits for Prevention of Significant Deterioration (PSD) to AMNS Calvert LLC located at 1 Steel Drive, Calvert, Alabama 36513. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony for the proposed permit renewal. In addition to oral testimony as described in the notice for this hearing, the department will also consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public comment period. The department has requested your comments and we appreciate your taking the time to make them known to us. On January 29th, 2021, notice of the date, time, place, and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website. In addition, the department sent notice of this hearing by email to individuals and organizations who had previously requested advanced notice of permit proceedings. A copy of the notice and the email distribution list will be entered into the record of these proceedings. Copies of the public notice, permit application, and draft permit have been made available for inspection by the public at the office of the department at 1400 Coliseum Boulevard in Montgomery as well as the department's website. The hearing is open to the public and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit a written statement may do so. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. Leaky statements or those containing considerable technical or other complex data should be submitted in writing. Summaries of such statements may be presented orally. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before a final permit decision is made. Please be advised that the department is limited in the factors it can consider when making a permitting decision and must base the determinations only on whether the permit applicant has satisfied the requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations as granted to ADM by the legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department staff to clarify points and to develop a better understanding of what is being presented. These proceedings tonight, this proceeding tonight, is not an open forum as in a question and answer session. This hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit application. However, you may pose a comment in the form of a question which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit renewal. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have your written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officer tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It is important to note that written comments submitted through postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit action and develop responses to comments for the proposed permit. The hearing record, final permit determination, and responses to comments will be posted to the department's e-file system. This hearing is being captured by a court reporter to develop a transcript of this hearing for review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded on video and will be posted by the department's, on the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now, let us move on to the purpose of this hearing, the receipt of public comments. The order of appearance of persons giving testimony will be as follows. First, a representative of the department's Air Division, then any elected officials or their representative who have registered to speak. All remaining members of the public will be heard in the order in which they registered during the pre-registration offered online or by phone, and then those that registered onsite at this hearing. I will now recognize Mr. Jackson Rogers to present a statement on behalf of the department's Air Division.
Good evening. My name is Jackson Rogers and I'm with the Air Division of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. And I'm here to present a statement on behalf of the department concerning the proposed issuance of air permit numbers 5030095, X038 through X043 to AMNS Calvert LLC. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Air Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's air pollution control regulations. The department also has the authority to implement federal air pollution control regulations. AMNS Calvert LLC is proposing to construct new sources of air pollution to be located at their steel mill in Calvert, Alabama. The proposed new sources would include two new melt shops, each consisting of a 331 ton per hour electric arc furnace, a twin ladled alurgi furnace, and a continuous caster, as well as two de-gassing operations, scarfing operations, slag processing operations, scrapyard operations, a caster cooling tower, material storage silos, and seven emergency generator engines. Among these sources is equipment that will be subject to new source performance standards for air emissions. These regulations were developed by the USCPA and are uniformly applicable across the country. The proposed sources are also subject to review under the Prevention of Significant Deterioration section of the New Source Review Regulations. The department administers these regulations in Alabama. These regulations would limit emissions resulting from the storage and transfer of steel scrap, the melting of steel scrap in the furnaces, the further processing of molten steel and steel slabs, and the combustion of diesel in the emergency generator engines. The control devices that have been proposed for installation of this facility would be capable of meeting or exceeding all federal and state requirements. Based upon our review of the air permit application for this facility, the department has proposed the issuance of six air permits, each developed in accordance with the applicable state and federal requirements. The department has made a preliminary determination that compliance by AMNS Calvert LLC with the conditions of the proposed air permits will not result in violations of the applicable air quality standards designed to protect human health and the environment. The preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are received and reviewed. Thank you.
I will now recognize Shawn Cochran to present a statement on behalf of AMNS Calvert LLC.
Good evening. My name is Shawn Cochran. I'm the general manager of steelmaking at AMNS Calvert. I'm responsible for both the project and the future operations of the new facility that is being discussed this evening. I'd like to thank the Alabama Department of Environmental Management for allowing AMNS Calvert to offer comments this evening and also for holding this public hearing. AMNS Calvert supports favorable issuance of the air permit after the close of the comment period. Right now, I'd like to take this opportunity to review a few points about AMNS. We are a 50-50 joint venture between ArcelorMittal and Nafon Steel Corporation. The facility was purchased in 2014. The facility was purchased in 2014. Plant has capacity to serve the North American market since 2010 at about 5.3 million tons of steel production per year. AMNS Calvert is focused on meeting increasing OEM, that's automotive OEM, demand for advanced high-strength steels that are required to produce lighter weight, more fuel-efficient vehicles. AMNS Calvert and its 1,600 team members serve the automotive, construction, pipe and tube, service center, appliance, and HVAC industries with a broad portfolio of steel grades for value-added applications. Many of these customers are in Alabama and the southeastern United States. AMNS Calvert is also committed to the local community. We have invested over $1 million in the past three years. This includes our ArcelorMittal Foundation grant program, which significantly supports STEM education and environmental awareness with key nonprofit organizations. Many of these partnerships have been in place since the start of our facility. We are also immensely proud of our school partnerships. We invest in high school curriculums and partner through programs such as World of Opportunities, STEM Camp, summer internships, and Best Robotics. Our school partnerships extend to the University of South Alabama to promote minorities in engineering, summer internships, and our leadership involvement in key board positions. It is important for our organization to not only help develop a skilled workforce but develop a skilled, sustainable, local workforce. We hired 144 new team members in 2019. 62% were from Mobile County. Additionally, we just completed our first year with our team member volunteer group, Calvert Cares. Our team members, including our leadership team, have dedicated hundreds of hours in the community volunteering, supporting organizations that exemplify our company's diversity. As stated in our company's purpose and values, creating partnerships with customers, suppliers, and our community is a priority. Promoting trust through open communication is key. We do hope that today highlights our commitment to our values, our investment in this community now and in the future. We have submitted a complete application for PSD air permitting associated with our new steelmaking expansion. This includes and satisfies all currently applicable rules and regulations. The electric arc furnace and associated steelmaking process equipment will be one of the most technologically advanced steelmaking facilities in the world. This facility will also establish AMNS as a recycler of steel that will be repurposed into cars, trucks, appliances, and other high-value products. In closing, AMNS Calvert takes our commitment to the protection of the environment very seriously, and we have demonstrated this through the design and engineering phases by avoiding wetlands, use of best control technologies, ensuring robust design of pollution control equipment, and many other topics. Protection of the water resources, the Tom Bigby River, and air quality in South Alabama is a goal we share with all of our stakeholders, some who will speak this evening. Our team members are part of the local community. A safe and reliable operation of our plant is an important part of our continued commitment to the Mobile area and our state. We appreciate the opportunity to provide these comments and look forward to obtaining the final permit through ADM. Thank you very much.
No elected officials registered to speak. We will now proceed to the receipt of comments from members of the public. As indicated in the public notice for this hearing, oral testimony for each registered speaker is limited to seven minutes. We will continue the hearing until all persons who wish to speak have completed their oral comments. If anyone has prepared a statement that cannot be presented in a seven-minute timeframe, please use your time for oral testimony to summarize your comments and submit your full statement to the department in writing for placement in the record. Please step up to the microphone and clearly restate your name, the name of any interest or organization that you represent. Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded. Please also remember that this is not a question and answer session.
Thank you very much. Hi, I'm here tonight. My name is David Rogers. I serve as the Vice President of Economic Development for the Mobile Area Chamber of Commerce. We are the lead economic development agency for the city and the county of Mobile. We, our job is to recruit investment and create jobs and recruit industrial investment into this community to help out our citizens. On behalf of the 2,000-plus business members that make up our organization, the Mobile Area Chamber of Commerce, we do pride ourselves as the voice of business for this community and are happy to be here tonight in support of AMNS Calvert and their air permit application that has been before us tonight. We do feel that AMNS has taken the precautionary measures needed to make a sufficient, a sufficient application for this and has done extreme preventative measures for their operation of the two electric arc furnaces that will be coming in here. We do feel that they are in complete compliance with what ADM's ruling has been that we've been able to review. I will tell you, this project, which was referred to as Project Gator in our economic development world, has a very significance on the economic impact of this community. And I want to share a couple of those numbers with everybody tonight. We do feel, we did a 20-year impact analysis for this project. With this project and with their current operations, we do feel that the economic impact will be over $493 million to this local community, again, over the next 20 years. The 200 to 300 new direct jobs that'll be associated with this are well above our median income for our families with an average salary of what they have at the site that will be over $57,000. For us as a community, that does help when we're talking about bringing people out of poverty and taking folks that were, that are able to help out families, working families, helping out children and spouses. Additionally to this, you know, compared with their, with their existing operations, we know this will significantly enhance our port operations. So the Port of Mobile is, is the leading economic engine for the state of Alabama, not just our region, but for the entire state. And this will help us on what we're able to do on export side of things. It will also help us because we're bringing jobs back to us. These currently, these slabs are produced in a foreign country, in Brazil, and we're lucky that this will be, some of this production will be coming back here and creating US jobs right here in Mobile, Alabama that are here to stay. So with the impacts that we feel confident of for this investment, that'll create over 1,800 jobs at the site once, for AMNS Calvert, once this facility is up and running, we do feel that the $103 million payroll that will be coming into this, all of this is in comply, is, is in support of this project and is a good project for, for Mobile and our community. So with that, we are in full support of this and are, and believe that AMNS has shown substantial corporate citizenship in this, in this community, whether it be their leadership at the Chamber of Commerce in Mobile, there are millions of dollars that they have spent in other nonprofits in our community, with the education system and STEM education, and even with our environmental groups around, around Mobile and their leadership that they have shown on those board of directors and answered to their concerns and what, what can happen with that. So again, we're, we're happy to support this project and, and thank you for letting
Please step up to the microphone and clearly restate your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent. Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded. Please also remember that this is not a question and answer session.
Good afternoon or evening, Jennifer Denson, Partners for Environmental Progress. I'm the executive director. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. Partners for Environmental Progress, otherwise known as PEP, is a nonprofit organization of local business leaders who share the vision of applying best environmental practices both to the community as well as business issues. PEP members support strong economic growth balanced with sound environmental stewardship. Our 220-member companies represent large and small manufacturers, shipbuilders, engineering firms, industrial suppliers, and support services. Together, they employ more than 22,000 local employees. PEP member companies routinely go above and beyond government regulations and compliance to implement innovative projects to reduce their carbon footprint and to protect and conserve the local natural resources that make the Alabama Gulf Coast such a wonderful place to live and work. On behalf of the PEP Board of Directors and our members, we strongly support AMNS's PSD permit application, which will allow the company to build two new melt shops. The site in Calvert is the world's most advanced steel finishing facility, and adding the ability to make steel slabs onsite creates a reliable supply and competitive lead times which will enhance the sustainability of this site. The $750 million project investment is a positive economic development for the local community. This project will incorporate scrap steel recycling and will assist AMNS in achieving its company-wide goals of carbon neutrality by 2050. Along with that and with creating new jobs, the project will enhance the long-term economic viability of the company and surrounding community, a positive triple bottom line impact. The company is a good corporate neighbor, supporting the local schools through internships, programs, and other resources, communicating to stakeholders such as PEP and other environmental organizations, early and often providing information and answering questions about all of their facility processes and plans. Certainly a good corporate neighbor through demonstrating a strong track record of environmental compliance in its processes and environmental stewardship of the wetlands and the acreage on its site. In 2020, PEP awarded AMNS an Environmental Stewardship Award in recognition of their Wildlife Habitat and Biodiversity Improvement Program. And last fall, AMNS adopted PEP's Trash Blows Stow It Education Campaign to educate employees, to educate their employees about the problem of truck bed trash litter, and they also routinely conduct litter cleanups on their site and surrounding streets and highways. To minimize this new project's environmental impact, AMNS has incorporated several key elements. They redesigned the project to avoid impacting onsite wetlands. They add, are adding a groundwater liner at their scrap and slag yards, which is not required by law. They are reusing cooling tower water for slag operations, reusing waste metal from the existing mills, installing redundancy and monitoring baghouse operations, and they've requested their process equipment suppliers to change certain components to achieve lower rates for SO2 and VOC emissions. So considering these features and ADM's finding that the project pollutant concentrations are less than the NAAQS and that each pollutant is not expected to exceed the NAAQS, PEP fully supports the issuance of the PSD permit. Thank you for your time.
Please step up to the microphone and clearly restate your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent. Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure that an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded. Please also remember that this is not a question and answer session.
My name is Lee Baron Berg. I'm the chief of the Moab Band of Choctaw Indians. Our reservation's out on Red Fox Road, right there in Calvert. I've been involved with AMNS ever since they started their business there back when it was desecrated. We have been involved with getting jobs for our members. We've been involved with having community meetings with AMNS. We have toured the facility. I have seen what is going on with the making of the steel there. And from my information concerning this new expansion, it's going to produce a lot of jobs for our community and surrounding areas. We have quite a few tribal members who work at AMNS. They enjoy working there. They have not heard anyone who complained about the conditions, working conditions, or environmental conditions while they're working. So that leads me to believe that everything that AMNS is doing to protect the environment, they're doing it. When we toured the facility, I looked at whether or not they were meeting the standards. I've been involved in other ADM situations, and I could say that I haven't seen anything that AMNS was doing contrary to what they're supposed to do as far as the environment. And so with that, I'd like to say that with this expansion and with the efforts that AMNS has taken to secure the property around there, to protect the environment with runoff water, with the habitat around there, I believe they're going to make whatever they put in their plans that they fulfill those obligations.
Please step up to the microphone and clearly restate your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent. Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be recorded. Please also remember that this is not a question and answer session.
Thanks. My name is Kate Kissler. I'm the program director at Mobile Bay Keeper. We're a 23-year-old nonprofit whose mission is to protect clean water, clean air, and healthy communities in the Mobile Bay watershed. My comments are on behalf of our 4,500 members, board of directors, and staff. And of course, regarding the proposed issuance of the PSD permits for AMNS Calvert's new electric arc furnace. I want to provide some of our overall take on the permit tonight, but we will also be submitting written comments, more substantial written comments, to ADM before the close of the comment period. I want to start by stating that Mobile Bay Keeper is concerned by the absolute amount of emissions that this project entails. The increase in emissions for the Mobile area is not something that we're pleased with. While we understand AMNS Calvert has a global strategy to become carbon neutral, moving this EAF, by, by moving to this EAF facility and lower emissions, in part of that, our focus is tightly on the Mobile Bay area, and that's the area that these emissions will be most directly visited on. We'll touch on some of that in our written comments as well. However, with that said, we would like to commend AMNS Calvert for providing a previously unseen degree of transparency during the process of development of this project, of the EAF, and the environmental review that went into it. They took a relatively rare step of including us, including Mobile Bay Keeper, early on in the process of developing the facility. And while we can't say that we endorse the facility, we can say that our work together has been greatly encouraging. In our conversations, we continually pushed AMNS Calvert's team to reduce emissions, to invest in best available technologies, and to avoid impacts wherever possible. At each meeting, they carefully listened, researched our recommendations, and questions, and provided us detailed feedback as to how they had benchmarked their emissions and attempted to develop a facility. They utilized best available technologies, really, you know, in line with the best facilities in the world as far as electric arc furnaces go. We saw their teamwork diligently to reduce emissions through significant investments. We saw them make reductions, including over 175 tons per year of SO2 reductions and VOC emissions. emissions being reduced by about 220 tons per year from the point that we started those conversations until this proposed permit was issued. And additionally, even though it's not directly germane to this project, we pushed them on some other impacts and saw them go from a plan that would have impacted several acres of wetlands to completely avoiding wetland fill on the project area. And that's a lesson that I think a lot of projects could go, could do, do more by looking at. We're proud to see AMNS Calvert invest more than $30 million on top of the already planned environmental technologies to achieve base level compliance. With all that said, we expect AMNS Calvert to continue with these good faith efforts by aggressively pursuing new best available technologies as they become available and proactively asking ADM to work these additional reductions into their permit. We only expect to see them achieve real-world emissions figures significantly less than the permit limitations and achieve compliance consistently as they build and operate the facility. We'll be closely monitoring these items and expect nothing less. Thank you for your time.
We are going to pause for 15 minutes to allow time for anyone else that might be planning to attend the hearing tonight. Since there are no more registered speakers, please be advised that unless otherwise notified, the public comment period will end at 5:00 PM on March 9, 2021. All comments must be received at the office of the department in Montgomery by that time. After consideration of all oral and written comments, the department will make its determination regarding the proposed permit renewal and prepare responses to all relevant comments received. Thank you for your participation in this evening. The hearing is adjourned.